Our senior citizens, because they do amass great wisdom. Just their endurance is astonishing. Now quickly, would you give me the website where people can get the information for this exhibition?
Yeah, it would be Barry Schaefer Photography dot com.
Okay, Barry Schaefer Photography dot com.
Or Google "Over 80 Quiet Heroes Over 80 Barry Schaefer."
Right, and the reason I bring that up is because we're going to take a moment now to give you a sample of these wonderful photographs, so let's all watch. The gentleman you are looking at right now is our special guest today, and Barbara, if you would do the honors and please introduce him.
This is Dr. Reverend Longi...
Oh, now help us with it. It's a tough...
Pula Kanda.
And the reason that's so difficult is you were originally, you were born in the Congo, the Democratic Republic of Congo.
Yes.
Now you must tell us how you came to the United States. How did that happen?
First, visits to the Louis, I got a scholarship from USC government.
I see.
In 1962.
1962.
Yes.
And your name means teacher.
Longi means teacher.
Yes, I understand. So you came to the United States, was that for educational purposes?
Yes. So I spent four months in Washington DC.
Yes.
At Georgetown University.
Yes, Georgetown's a wonderful place.
To be trained in English language.
Yes.
After this, I've been sent to Los Angeles.
I see.
At USC School, University of Southern California.
Yes, USC.
In school administration, teaching methods.
Wow.
After 12 months, I went back to my own country, into the, in the Republic Democratic of Congo.
Yes.
And from this time, I became Executive Secretary of all Protestant Christian schools.
Wow.
In the entire country.
I understand.
So I've been traveling to go to recruit professors in Europe.
Yes.
Then, I was the one who initiated the University of Kisangani in Congo.
I see.
But I had a wonderful friend with whom I was working with them, like Dr. Hopgood.
Dr. Hopgood, yes.
American, followers. Then we have been walking, I've been traveling in my country, in every corner.
Now, were you establishing schools in villages and...
Schools in rural areas.
Yes, I understand.
Then, from primary level to the university.
Isn't that something?
I developed the whole system of education in my country.
Fantastic. Now, did you start a family then as well? Is that, do you have children and...
Oh, yes, yes. I got married with my wife on, how do you say, 12th December, 1947.
Wow, that's amazing.
And I still keeping the same wife.
That's very unusual. But now, do you live here in Los Angeles permanently now? Because I imagine travel is a little different.
Yes, now we live in Pasadena.
In Pasadena?
Yes. And I have started a church.
A church, yes.
To help those African Congoan people who don't speak English.
Yes.
But we have to minister to them.
Outstanding. What a fascinating story, and again, this is another part of Los Angeles.
Yes.
And I thank you so much for sharing with us, but before we go, there's a big spiritual component to this, and your relationship with God, and the things you have learned by that relationship. And I noticed up there that you said that if you think that skin color somehow can determine your life, you're standing too far from God.
Well, people have to understand that we don't have to contest anything that God has performed.
That's right.
But we have to obey.
Yes.
We have to listen, because God has never created anything without a purpose. So, man has to understand that he is living once forever on this earth, and God is expecting him to accomplish the purpose for which he put him on earth one time. He will not come back.
You're a wonderful resource, and we're lucky to have you here in our community.
Thank you.
We're going to, we're going to see a very special videotape, and I hope you pay attention. This is such a pleasure for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have fears when you look upon the world, when you look upon the changes.
Just fears for my children in grandeur or something might happen to them.
No fears.
No fear.
No, I could die tonight, I have no fear. And that's what everybody fears.
They fear the, if your death.
They fear death. It's so alien to them. And nobody came back to tell us what it's like on the other side, so we just have to take it and, like we take our fate. We accept it.
Well, that's a good question. I suppose when you get into your 80s, you have to face the fact that, you know, you're not going to live till 160. You know, you're by the halfway mark already, probably a lot further. I don't, I don't dwell on it, but I don't relish dying, but the day will come, and that will be it, and I don't know how well I'll handle it.
Powerful segment. We'll be right back.
An emergency can happen at any time.
Earthquake!
That's why you need to be prepared. Put together an emergency kit with food, water, a first aid kit, a flashlight, radio, and some tools.
I can't believe it, it's an earthquake!
You're never too old to prepare. Get the message? Be prepared.
There are heroes among us. They don't fly, or bend steel, or ride off into the sunset. They simply volunteer to look after someone else's health, not providing comfort, lending a hand, or simply keeping us on track. Everyone's health needs a hero. Who would you look out for?
Find out how you can participate in improving our health. Visit iparticipate.org.
Welcome back to Aging in LA. Permit me to introduce you to Stella Guzman, 98 years old. Here's a few words from Stella. My advice: be good to people, love each other, and have a loving heart. Dance and sing. Live good, be healthy. You had to have such a good time being in the company of these people.
Oh, absolutely. She is...
Show me some of the other ones.
She's just a character, and by the way, she represents the Native American of the population here, but yeah, come on down here.
Okay, here.
This is another very fine, this is another fine gentleman.
Yes.
Ahmed Aziz, from Palestine. You know, entrusted us to come in and ask him difficult questions about, you know, difficult times, but you mind if I...
No, please, please do read.
I have, these are his words. "I have despair and I am tired. Everyone has disappointed me. I have lost hope in any heroes or ideas. Life has proved they all come and talk about the same thing, but the situation never changes. Since I was a young man in Palestine, I hear the same things over and over again, and nothing has changed nearly a century later. The pain of my hopelessness is too big to describe." But, at the end of the interview, he said, "I have hope."
So, and you've captured that, then. These people, the wonder of this is that their lives are captured on their faces, and you've captured that.
It's been a real privilege.
Sure.
Guy Pasquini, Pasquini Coffee Company. Spent his first night in America under a bench in Washington Square.
In New York City?
In New York City.
Columbus Square.
Columbus Square.
Yes.
That's true.
Came over as a stowaway.
Oh, stowed away.
Stowaway.
Wow!
And today he's created a family, he's created a great business.
Sure.
He is truly a quiet hero, like, like I keep saying about everybody.
Like so many of the others. It's like a Robert Louis Stevenson novel, but for real.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Here's somebody, here's a great gal, you know.
Rachel Lappin.
Rachel Lappin, from Israel. Migrated to the United States. But upon our interview with her, she said, "I love Israel with my feet, not my heart. It is my heart where my Judaism lives. I love tradition. I remember the songs of the sheddel where my parents sang to me."
Wow, wow, wow.
So we move across the globe.
Yes, this is, it's like a Wanderer, The Wanderers.
This gentleman is an intellectual teacher of literature from Tehran University. There's, does he have something here? He really does.
Oh, I love this last line. "Tragedy..." Go ahead. "Tragedy has made my softer skin hide behind a harder one." Astonishing. Look at that gaze, oh my. So now, here's another one, I found this portrait quite fascinating. Was this just a sort of spontaneous photo, or you, did you take the time to light it and do...
All of these images are photographed with natural light. We would walk into their homes, into their YMCA at times, but just a random spot with no preparation.
I want to share her with us. Let me come over this way, and if you could come here, Barbara and Barry.
Let me introduce, this is Dr. Gwen Bishop. She's 88 years old. And one of the things that she said that really touched me is, "I have a problem with too much ethnocentricity, and I would like to see people mix groups more than we have in this generation. There has to be a balance between assimilation and maintaining your own culture. It all goes back to a model. I don't know how far away you can get from certain stereotypes."
Amazing. And this is third generation college graduate, pretty astonishing. Now, this one truly touched me, because there's a story here. If you could introduce us to Fastino from, from the Philippines, correct?
From the Philippines. He's, he has his military cap on, and he's, I think that, I think that a lot of his life is the pride of what he did during the war.
What he survived.
And what he's, what he went through.
Yes.
Yeah. He's this, I'm going to read again. He's a survivor of the baton death march during World War II, and was incarcerated as a survival, survivor of Japanese concentration camp at Kapaz Tarlock. He was imprisoned in provisional jail of Yorokosur Vigon, fought a guerrilla war, he's been decorated, and he's been admired by Bill Clinton when Clinton was President of the United States.
It's just amazing. There are so many of these stories, you've got to come down and see this exhibit. Once again, the website, so people can get the information.
What is the web?
Quiet Heroes Over 80.
No, it is over80.barryschaeferphotography.com.
Okay, we'll make sure that it's on the television screen. Now, we're going to take a little break and see yet another video interview, so please, stay with us. So have there been moments or experiences in your life that hold more significance than other times?
My folks were very poor people, and so they never gave me the education I wanted. I could have been a registered nurse, but they couldn't afford to leave me go to college to get to, and I looked at my granddaughter's dream. And what brought me to America? I came for the old, so it wasn't at all money that was after. My American dream was the dream of freedom, and my very Islamic, the core of my Islamic belief. God created all living things programmed, man, choice. And you got the responsibility. It is this concept of freedom. To me, a human being is the being that is free, and I came to America to live in a free atmosphere.
Welcome back to Aging in LA. You know, it's always a pleasure when you find a secret gem in the midst of Los Angeles, and I thought we'd talk now with Nicolet Komanos, who is a representative of the gallery here. Can you tell me a little of the history? Because this is a unique place.
Oh, thank you. The gallery was started about 25 years ago by our director, Lydia Takashita, and it's a nonprofit, and Lydia has been the director and curator for all these years, and the mission of the gallery is to show the diversity, not only of, in terms of ethnicity, but in terms of gender, age. And we have a wide variety of artists who show here. I mean, many galleries show mid-career artists, and artists who are well established, but we also show artists who are just beginning in their career.
I see, and just based on the uniqueness of this Quiet Heroes Over 80. You can see that that's a very interesting perspective, and Lydia is to be congratulated for that.
Absolutely.
How long ago did you move into this building? Was it 25 years?
I think I've been here about 10 years.
Wow, outstanding.
But the gallery actually started, the first venue was in Little Tokyo.
I see, so you've moved around a little bit.
It's moved around, and we still have another location.
Okay, so it's LA Art Core, this is the brewery annex, and what's the other location?
The other one is Union Center.
Okay, Union Center. Now, we're going to rejoin Barbara and Barry Schaefer to talk some more about these extraordinary pictures of our Quiet Heroes Over 80. Now, I'm sharing with you a picture that really caught my eye, of a lovely lady, Lydia Fermansky, and you were telling me about the challenges of her very small apartment.
So often, it would be so difficult to find the right setting to be able to take a good image. This one, I was almost falling off her balcony.
I understand. And Barbara, to me, she looks like she's got a lot of living in her life.
You know, Lydia, not only was she, is she a quiet hero, but she also was a hero in her early days.
And recognized for that.
And a recognized hero.
Yes.
She was, she is, known as a righteous Gentile, and was honored by the State of Israel. And what that means is that she helped the Jews escape persecution.
Nazi Germany.
Nazi Germany. And she has a, amongst other things, one of her wonderful stories is that she harbored an eight-year-old boy in her home against her parents' wishes. She was 19 years old.
Oh my.
And then walked him to safety through the forest, trading her jewelry for food for them, until she handed him over to the Red Cross.
Remarkable. I understand this, a smaller portion of this exhibition will be at the Bridge Gallery downtown, correct?
Right, at City Hall.
Right, so from 14th of May to June 18th. If you miss it here, you can perhaps will have a chance to see it there. But again, thank you for being here with us today on Aging in LA, and this is worth a trip, because it's not just the words and the images, it'll make you think. These are our fellow citizens. Anyway, thank you for joining us, and again, thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Garcetti and I'm proud to represent Hollywood on the Los Angeles City Council. There are so many interesting things to see here, some famous, some less famous but just as interesting. Today, we'll show you one of each. So let's go on location at one of Hollywood's landmarks. Crossroads of the World is best known for its iconic revolving globe hovering above Sunset Boulevard. Built in 1936 as a retail shopping center, Crossroads was originally designed for Ella Crawford, the widow of Charles Crawford, a Hollywood real estate man. The Crawfords enjoyed traveling and wanted to bring Los Angeles examples of architecture from around the world. Buildings with Spanish, Mediterranean, French, and Italian features surround an ocean liner. In the 1970s, the property was saved from the wrecking ball and restored by its new owner. Today, Crossroads is primarily a collection of private offices and is frequently used as a shooting location for films and television shows. The globe continues to revolve above it all, just as it did in 1936. After you've checked out the Crossroads of the World, go next door and check out another Hollywood gem. The Blessed Sacrament Church is another architectural masterpiece, known for being the home parish for many of Hollywood's early stars such as Bing Crosby and Ricardo Montalban. The Blessed Sacrament Church has been a cornerstone of the Hollywood community for more than a century. Its many ministries and outreach programs have been instrumental in Hollywood's revitalization efforts. You can go online for more information. It's all right here in Hollywood, so bring your family and check it out today.
5th, 2011. Thank you to council members Cardenas, Labange, Perry, Rosendahl, Smith, Weston, and Zine. We're waiting two more council members and council members Alarcon, Han, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, and Reyes are late if they will join us right away. Thank you to members of the public who are here and those watching us on Channel 35 or through the internet at lacity.org, or listening in through their phones through LA Council phone, which is 213-621-CITY. I hope everybody had a good New Year. It was good to see folks here yesterday. Thank you to members of the public who are here as well as those who are watching us. You can also testify from here or from Van Nuys and San Pedro City Halls, that's closer to where you live. And our agendas are available 72 hours in advance or 24 hours in advance throughout city buildings, the city clerk's office, and online at lacity.org. We have cards in the back for anybody who would wish to be heard or in our San Pedro and Van Nuys council chambers. Just fill those out and give it to one of the sergeants-at-arms or city staff and we'll be sure to get your card in the mix. We also have general public comment, which is for items not on the agenda but nevertheless under the jurisdiction of our city council. And thank you now with Mr. Reyes's arrival. We have just one more council member and we're waiting Mr. Alarcon, Ms. Han, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Corretts, and Mr. Krikorian. Thank you for your patience while we wait. Those late council members will begin shortly, as soon as they are here. Thank you. So final call for council members. There's Ms. Han. Please call the roll, Mr. Cook.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business, please. Approval of the minutes. All right, Ms. Han moves and Mr. Krikorian seconds without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business? Commendatory resolutions for approval. All right, Mr. Reyes moves and Mr. Rosendahl seconds without objection. Those will be approved as well. Next order of business?
Mr. President, items 1 through 6 are items noticed for a public hearing.
Alrighty. Do we have any cards on those items?
Sir, we have a card on item number 1.
Okay, we'll call that special for cards from the public. We'll close the public hearings on 2 through 6. Anybody wishing to call those special? Seeing none, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, items 7 through 10 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call 7 through 10 special? 7 through 10 colleagues. If not, please prepare the roll. 7 through 10. Ms. Han wants number 10. And Mr. Reyes? Number 8 for Mr. Reyes. So let's take up 7 and 9. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, items 11 through 16 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection. Those are considered before us?
Pardon me, there have been requests to continue item 14 to January 7 and item 16 to January 12.
Okay, if there's no objection, we'll continue those items. Do we have cards on any of the others?
Yes, we do. We have cards on 14.
Sir, we do. We have cards on 11, 12, 13, and 15.
11, 12. All right, we'll call this special for cards in the public. That will take us to our general public comment now. And Anchor Patel in Van Nuys is our first speaker. Good morning.
Good morning. The criminalization of dissent, not only globally with Julian Assange and WikiLeaks, but here in Los Angeles City. I'd like to read an open letter to city attorney Carmen Trutanich. I usually don't read, but let's go for something. Arizona's SB 1070, a bill that mandates racial profiling, was signed into law by Arizona's governor Jan Brewer in late April 2010. Deportations, detentions, and draconian anti-immigrant laws such as Arizona's SB 1070 have created an atmosphere of terror for millions of undocumented people living in this country. The bill's racism and intent to criminalize immigrants and people of color sparked protests and resistance throughout the country, including acts of civil disobedience in Arizona, Los Angeles, New York, Chicago, Orange County, and many other cities. A grouping of immigrant rights and community activists organized a protest on May 6th where 14 people staged a sit-in in front of the federal detention center in downtown Los Angeles, blocking buses used for deportations from accessing the facility for several hours. There was another event on July 29th. They were arrested for acts of civil disobedience in Los Angeles were guided by the words of Dr. King. "It is our moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws." Now, these 24 demonstrators, 14 at the first demonstration, 10 at the second, along with many others struggling for social and economic justice, that's how I got into this, there are also four students at CSUN who have been arrested for nonviolent protests. They're being politicized, prosecuted by the city attorney, and seeking to criminalize dissent at a moment when it's most necessary. These people are facing jail time for nonviolent disobedience.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. John Walsh is our first speaker in council chambers. He'll be followed by Pat McCosker. Good morning.
Good morning. John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands. There's an S on that. Dot org. In case you think I'm just playing with myself up here, yesterday I pointed right there, Smith had a big advertising poster for his book that came out. I said it was against the rules and you'll see it's not there anymore. This isn't for advertising here. This isn't a massage parlor, although the relationship between one city council member and a lobbyist may make it almost a lobby, a massage parlor. And incidentally, I'm going to buy a copy of the book. I'm going to buy a copy of Smith's book as long as he signs it for me. "Council approves quarter of a billion-dollar LAX contract." This is a version in the Daily News. It says Zine has been dating, yeah, dating, a Tuta Saliba, Tuta Parini lobbyist Veronica Boom Boom Becerra. He sought advice from the city attorney and ethics commission.
Sir, you should refrain from the personal comments.
There is nothing I am saying that is not protected by the First Amendment.
It was the... Yes, sir, I will protect your speech and I will allow you to express what is on the public record, but if you take things of a sexual nature that have not been printed, I will say that that is in violation of the rules.
Show me that. It constitutes...
Thank you, sir.
If you sleep with lobbyists and tell me I can't talk about a sexual nature...
Sir...
I mean, listen, I was here...
That is not on the public record.
The Nazis, this is, I'm talking about Nazis. You allowed them on the steps of City Hall while we, the anti-Nazi protesters, were on the sidewalk, okay? And they talked about killing Jews. They talked about Jew swines on our property. Of course, you said that was included. And when I talk about Zine, you say that's not included. Well, I'm telling you, you are the, you are...
Thank you, sir. Pat McCosker is our next speaker. And after that is Arnold Sachs. We're trying to let you know in carefully constrained ways how you can express yourself as vigorously as you always do. Arnold Sachs will follow Mr. McCosker.
Morning, council members. Pat McCosker, United Firefighters. While you were on your recess, the fire chief made another round of cuts, unfortunately, budget cuts in the fire department. We now have every day 22 fire companies closed. That's 15% of our firefighting resources. We've closed 2/3 of our hazmat units in the city. We've lost 2/3 of our paramedic supervisors in this city. And we're dangerously understaffed. We were an already understaffed fire department compared to national standards, at only about 1,100 people every day on duty protecting the citizens of Los Angeles. Now we're down to about 950 every day. We are dangerously understaffed. Our on-scene times are going up. Yesterday, we had a fire in Fire Station 52's district, Mr. Labange on Serrano, and you had, in early morning hours, and you had three-engine companies struggling in there, unable to operate without the first truck company on scene, which came from the Dodger Stadium area here at Fire Station 20. Before they got there, they had to back out. They lost the structure. It ventilated itself, burned through the roof, and the structure was lost. And thankfully, no one was killed. But this is what we are up against right now because of these budget cuts. We understand this budget crisis, but the fire chief moved forward on this without your permission. Before you left on break, you instructed him to come back with a plan regarding staffing. And you also, thank you, council member Alarcon, instructed him to come back with a report regarding staff assistance and how everyone else does it, and whether or not there's a better way to staff this fire department. And then while you were gone, he rushed ahead and he closed companies. And I'm convinced that he does that to protect those staff assistant positions, those drivers for chief officers. Please have us be part of this discussion as we get through this budget crisis. We think there's a better way to do it. It ought to start with taking advantage of the savings that we've offered, $35 million in our contract that the CIO's office has now reneged on. We'd like you to take advantage of that and work with us on what is safe staffing in Los Angeles, because we're going to get more people killed. We're going to get a firefighter killed before this is over. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. Arnold Sachs is our next speaker. After that will be Dr. Clyde Williams.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Welcome back. Arnold Sachs. That was the bad news. The good news was, this year, the city labor, the unions are getting that pay raise that you managed to work out for them last year in the budget cuts, that, you know, the $30 million. I wonder how many fire houses would have stayed open if that money had been allocated to them instead of a pay raise. That being said, gee, I'm sorry I missed yesterday's discussion over the contract at the airport. But even before that, you might have read in the Daily Breeze, they did an article on the 25th, "In Budget Crisis, Volunteers Fill L.A. Service Gap." And it goes on to say that the city depends on more than 25,000 serving each week. So then, the council, where all these brilliant ideas and decisions are made, can somebody explain again, because I've asked this question before, how cutting the Travelers Aid, which is a volunteer group at the airport, which I know that you're so fiduciarily responsible for, how cutting that volunteer group saves the city money? And there's a $400,000 contract involved. Saving the city money. A $200 million, $200 million contract yesterday. The renovations at LAX, from when I started coming in here three years ago, have gone from $3 billion to $10 billion. And there hasn't been a meeting to say what the hell's going on. A $200 million contract comes up, less than 3% of the raise, the cost of doing the renovations at LAX, and you spend two hours talking about it? Thank God I wasn't here to puke my guts out.
Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker. After that is Richard Robinson.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Bear Road, Elsarena, Northeast LA. It was an exciting discussion for almost two hours, so exciting now I fell asleep. Thank you very much for waking me up in time for item 14.
We got your back, don't worry.
Yeah. However, there was also a circulation regarding potholes. We're back to potholes again. And one of the things that it's related to is the stormwater program. Proposition O has been implemented. There's a lot of things that have been done. However, there's no money for the operations and maintenance and the cleaning of the screens on the stormwater inlets. During the last two weeks, there was a lot of water ponding due to the lack of cleaning of the screens. If you're going to have capital improvements, there must be operations and maintenance. The Bureau of Sanitation has already indicated that it will be 6% to 8% of the total budget for capital that should be used in operations, but they don't have the $50 million to go with the $500 million for Prop O. So if we're going to clean the screens in order to keep ponding water away, what's going to happen? Who's going to give $50 million for screen cleaning in order so that the asphalt doesn't get soaked? And if you look at the coordination, water soaking, asphalt, potholes. So we're going to have a pothole repair this weekend supposedly, and I hope they will clean the screens on the inlets also. Thank you.
Thank you. And just FYI, Dr. Williams, we're working with the county on ongoing maintenance charges on the stormwater piece, which I know they have strong concerns about as well. So, quite well taken. Mr. Robinson is our next speaker. After that will be Rick Nightengale in Van Nuys.
Mr. President, I was a follow-up to that. I can remember a time in Santa Barbara when former mayor Harriet Miller, she says, "You better fix the drains." For years, she said that, and they were ignored. The cloud burst that occurred several years ago just flooded the city's streets because the drains were not repaired clean. Sir, the price we pay for a civilized society is taxes. Oliver Wendell Holmes. Pardon me. The paper very clearly shows that we are in Sacramento being given sage advice by a truly gifted individual, Governor Brown. What is he saying? Howard Jarvis did a magnificent job in defending the property rights of individuals. Proposition 13, however, is somewhat, pardon me for digressing, Oliver Wendell Holmes says the prices we pay for a civilized society are taxes. Those who cannot defend themselves, for example homeless people, need money. Repeat, old proposition. The obvious need not be stated. It's moot. We have to repeal Proposition 13. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Rick Nightengale is next in Van Nuys. After that will be Daniel Garcia here in council chambers. Good morning, Mr. Nightengale.
Yeah, good morning, Rick Nightengale. I'll tell you, I'm telling you again, you need to put a freeze across the board for everybody to get a pay raise. It's the only way you can possibly do this situation, that nobody can turn around and say that, oh, you're picking on me and you're against me and so forth and so on. I mean, why don't you people have the gumption to do it? I mean, I don't understand it. If the President of the United States can do it, why can't you? I mean, I don't understand it. Same as illegal aliens and all that stuff going on. I'll tell you, I hope, and I'd like you to announce when you people are having your meetings and debates regarding for new people running for the council. Because anybody that's against the sanctuary city and so forth, they should turn around... and it ought to be something that they talk about, and you people ought to vote against it. I'm telling you, if they're for a sanctuary city, don't even think about them. You've got to take care of this city. It's just bleeding, bleeding, bleeding. And every time I come here, if it isn't for the sanctuary city and so forth, it's for the homeless and so forth. I'm sorry, but you've got to take care of your own, and we're the ones that are paying the taxes. These other people aren't paying the taxes. They might pay taxes going and buying something in a store, but they're not taking, they're not paying property tax and all the rest of the taxes. I'm sorry, that's just the way it is. But a few people can handle it, and I mean, I hope everybody of you people get voted out because you're not doing your jobs. You've got the Mexican mafia up there takes their, and they just keep going on and on and on. And they're going to be out pretty soon, hopefully, and get back to the basics of what this thing was all about a few years back. I mean, it's just gotten worse, and I can see it's not going to get any better. And you people better listen. I'm telling you, you better listen and start doing your homework. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Garcia is our last speaker for public comment. Happy New Year and good morning.
Good morning and Happy New Year, everybody. I hope you hear maybe more proactive in your area of activity in the city council. My main concern, I have two concerns that came to you today for you to be addressed. One is some of the staff members of the Office of Great Miss that may consider people who live here today to be involved in relating the area of concerns. I have been, I haven't been called back when I wanted to be, I have an appointment, I have to be a, I have to be a, I have to be, um, to talk to Great Miss about my situation, and they didn't call me, and my home number, the staff didn't call me, okay? And that's my main concern. And I am, I pay taxes here, I have my concerns, I am a business owner too, I'm a homeowner too, so therefore I want my representation. I feel, I feel that I'm underrepresented here, okay? So please be aware of the issue, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. We'll get someone to come over and speak with you right away. With that, Mr. Alarcon, did you want to speak about something? Your button was pressed.
I just wanted, in response to Mr. McCosker's comments, to note that we do have a motion that is, that Mr. Parks has agreed to take up expeditiously. I would remind the council that it's not the chief's decision to cut these, it's the budget decision that the majority of this council made to cut these positions that has to be reconsidered, and that's why that report is so imperative. And I urge that we all express our need to have that hearing by Mr. Parks. Thank you.
Absolutely. And we will push that. Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon. With that, we'll go to the items that have been called special. Our first one is item one, Mr. Clerk. Called special for a card from the public, Arnold Sacks on number one.
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Although it's minor, just again, look for clarification. This is regarding a reviving lighting district, and you're going to levy an assessment ordering the maintenance of the above lighting district in accordance with the sections of the Los Angeles Administrative Code and Government Code. And it's going to be improvement of maintenance of the lighting district. So my question actually, though, is when you establish a business improvement district, you go through assessing the business district, confirming assessments against properties within the bid, but then you go ahead and you have an agreement between the city clerk or the city attorney and a nonprofit management organization, entity. So my question is basically, why do you need to have a nonprofit management entity for business improvement districts when you don't have a nonprofit entity for lighting improvement districts? And if you don't have a lighting improvement, a nonprofit entity for your lighting improvement districts, why is it necessary for businesses to pay for a nonprofit entity when the city has shown that it can maintain and improve the lighting improvement districts without that entity? Why do they need to have the entity, a nonprofit entity, for the business improvement districts which pay a higher assessment probably than in the lighting improvement district? Maybe we can get a fiduciary responsibility answer on that. Thank you.
Thank you. And just briefly, Mr. Sacks, there are different legal entities. One is when the business votes themselves to have that happen. It happens to go through the city, but it's not run by the city. And they make the choice through a democratic election of who runs that district. In this one, it's residents making a decision to have the city run a lighting district. So they both have district, but they're completely separate legal entities. With that, let's go ahead and, we're going to keep this open, or do we vote on this today? We vote, okay? Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right, that is approved. Next item called special, please. That brings us to item eight, called special for Councilmember Reyes. Mr. Reyes, number eight.
Thank you, Council President. If I can, I'd like to bring eight and 13 together.
Sure, absolutely.
Colleagues, what's before us is noted and filed, but I just wanted to rise and share with you and thank the Bureau of Sanitation, Bureau of Engineering, the Planning Department, the CRA and Department of Water and Power. Through the River Committee meetings, we've been able to break down these different challenges and how we act as one city. With different departments, while working together, we're essentially identifying potential for the creation of jobs. Now, how will that happen? By looking at our waterways, looking at the innovative systems that are being cultivated by Bureau of Sanitation, the engineering efforts of our bureau, the hard work of CRA in creating these overlay zones, looking at new CRA areas, and identifying how Department of Water and Power and leveraging their resources can help us look at the strategy of creating jobs. So we've been seeing different examples, microcosms, of how this can happen in different districts throughout the river. We see different projects emerging. And thanks for the hard work of our staff in terms of linking relevance to the river, not only in the form of environmental issues, but also job creation, looking at decreasing the pressures caused by density and poverty, looking at how we create recreational opportunities, but just as important, creating these anchors for economic development strategies. So these silos that exist, we're trying to break through with these bridges created by this one common element, which is water through the river system. So I wanted to share that with you, because at times we get really busy within our own committees. We have a lot on our plates, we have big challenges, but sometimes the answer is in front of us and how we use our own resources to create jobs. Today's the new Congress. We're going to see a whole shift in how we look at our resources at a federal level. The likelihood of our ability to seek help from the federal government continues to diminish with time, given the pushback and setting back expenditures to 2008. So we have to, as a city, look to ourselves and how we create these opportunities. So these departments are the type of vehicles that we should be guiding, that we should be leading in how we stimulate these jobs. So I wanted to share this with you, colleagues. It is a very exciting time. I want to thank my colleagues, Councilmember Labange and Huesar, who've been in the committee as of late. But I can tell you that still a lot more work ahead of us. I'm hoping that between ourselves and the mayor's office, we can actually see the creation of jobs as we look with Army Corps of Engineers. When they finish a study, we can actually contemplate breaking out that cement from the river in very strategic places that allows us to connect with very real tributaries now that it's been acknowledged as a navigable water body, which allows us to seek Clean Water Act resources. So I want to thank you for your patience, but I want to get these two items together, and I will have to speak one time on this issue. So thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes, for your great leadership on this. You've been tremendous in the last decade of really revitalizing the river. And I know Mr. Cardenas wants to add some thoughts as well.
I just want to thank Councilmember Reyes for taking on this monumental task that has been taking a long time. But the reason why it's taken so long is because we want to do it right. For example, I was recently in San Antonio, Texas, where they have a river that they have redirected and reengineered, and it is now the number one destination point for tourism in the whole state of Texas. However, when you look at that landscape and you look at that situation, there are differences that don't apply to Los Angeles. But I think thankfully, there are some things that we can learn from them in other areas, such in Tennessee and other places where they do have those kinds of facilities. However, again, it's not exactly applicable to just copycat what's going on in other places. This is a very big monumental engineering task. It has to do with cross-jurisdictional governments, state, county, city governments, et cetera, federal government. Hopefully, we can get some support for them. So I just wanted to let people know that this is a monumental task, and Councilmember Reyes has been doing a great, great job of moving this forward. But it's really going to take all of us to support it in order for us to get the attention from Washington and other places for them to understand it. Not only is this an opportunity economically for Los Angeles, it's also a responsibility for us to actually put this situation in a better place when it comes to engineering and flooding and things of that nature. So once again, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you, Councilmember Ed Reyes, for all your great work, and to remind everybody that we have a lot more work to do, but I think that we will be able to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. And since we combined this with 13, we'll hear the cards on 13 now. John Walsh is our first speaker. Arnold Sacks will follow.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org. Last year, 1 million successful requests and 100,000 unsuccessful requests, because they didn't put the S in. And also, email us if you feel that I am filthy-mouthed, I am talking. Email us at HollywoodDems@gmail.com.
Mr. President, he has not yet spoken about this item.
Please. Hey, Mr. Walsh, if you have, Mr. Walsh, that will be your last warning. You don't tell the city attorney to pipe down. Talk about what's here. And if you want to be disruptive of the meeting, we will suspend your ability to talk to us. So please talk about what's before us.
I'm trying to talk, you know, all you do is heckle. Hollywood, I would like to say that we think that the river, the people are doing an excellent job on the river. I think Mr. Reyes is doing an excellent job, Councilman Reyes. I think everybody has done an excellent job on the river. Thank you.
Thank you. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. I'd like to commend also Councilman Reyes for doing his job and not taking away from his duties on a go-to-line construction authority. And I think Councilman Cardenas is right, taking the time to want to do it right, which makes me want to rethink why I think the bus only lanes and the subway to the sea has taken so long, like 20 or 25 years, because you want to do it right. And Washington needs to recognize the project so that you can get the funding. Draws me to the debacle with the ARA funding that the city's gotten. Want to make sure we have the leadership in office and position in the committees and throughout the city departments so that there's not a vacuum created when the money does flow in. But I do have concerns, because this is a multi-billion-dollar project. And I see how the council has spoken up regarding the high-speed rail, and that's a multi-billion-dollar project. And all the studies that have gone into that, and all the programming and all the discussions, and the fact that Orange County wants to build a state-of-the-art transit center to incorporate high-speed rail, and yet, when the federal government made its decision, we're going to Hannaford, all aboard to Hannaford. So the city council has spoken up and said what? Nothing. So there's billions of dollars going to the state of California. Here's going to be billions of dollars, billions of dollars spent on the subway to the sea, nothing to show. Hundreds of studies, pages, books, volumes, discussions, and no completion. Look forward to your work on this project. Eyes wide shut.
Thank you. Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much, members. On this issue here, I just want to bring something up, real important, I think, all of us. As the river does get revitalized and as we move forward, a key component of that is the bikeway, Mr. Garcetti, the bikeway in your area, Mr. Reyes, leading us all. But I wanted to make sure in our work in 2011, we push it out through the San Fernando Valley alongside Universal and West to Sepulveda Basin and connect where Ernie's Walk is and other areas. Because there's nothing like an opportunity to engage people and ride safely in the river bikeway. So I wanted to thank you as we move forward here. And there's been a lot of work. This is a lot of work, and I know Mr. Cardenas shouted out for Ed Reyes, but Ed, you have absolutely created a foundation, and I see Lupi Vella right there and your staff there have created a foundation like the foundation of this great city hall that's going to stand tall in the coming years. The opportunity to enhance the lives of people is based on the river, as we were founded 228 years ago, 229 this coming September, 230 years ago this coming September, when we formed a publot on the river in 1781. Thank you, Mr. Reyes, and I just want to put a shout-out for the river bikeway.
Thank you, and it was great to see you there at the opening of that extension, and wonderful for pedestrians and for bicyclists alike right there in Legion Valley. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Councilmember Labange, Councilman Cardenas. I was remiss. I do want to thank Lupi Vella and my staff, and Jill Soriel, and the hard-working staff throughout the city. But they have been the gladiators of sorts as you go through all the different jurisdictions. I want to thank them. But I also wanted to reaffirm that there are bicycle corridors beginning to appear in the valley along the river corridor. I think in CD2, Councilmember Krikorian's district, we have several congress members that it's their favorite project for the river. So we're making sure we're keeping our congress members happy. I do know that in Councilman Alarcon's, we're looking at the tributaries. One of his first statements in this chamber as he came back was his concern for how that tributary was going to be impacted. I know they're doing their studies, so I know we're looking out for that as well. So it feels good to see both ends of the river corridor beginning to develop, and I thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. And with that, let's go ahead and take these items together. Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Maison and item 10 are next.
Thank you. There was just a technical amendment that has been circulated, so I'll just ask for an eye vote.
All right. That has been circulated, and if there's no objection, we'll add that amendment, 10A to it. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
All right. We'll approve the Budget Finance Committee report. And-- And next item, please call it special.
Mr. President, that brings us to item number 11. Call it special for cards.
Mr. Walsh and Dr. Williams, and that—
I would like to support this measure and number 11 concerning brush and weed abatement.
Thank you for comments, Mr. Walsh. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Cerrano. Fire. But this isn't fire. This is about lot clearing. Lot—sorry, lot cleaning. Lot cleaning is under the Bureau of Sanitation, Public Works. However, brush clearance, brush cleaning is under the LA Fire Department, but they're supposed to keep them separate, I think. However, there seems to be unwritten agreements that some lots are going to be cleared by Public Works, some by the Fire Department, but nobody seems to know who does which because there's no written description as to what jurisdiction has these lots. The lot next to me is in the very high fire severity zone, but it's going to be cleared by lot cleaning, which has totally different requirements. The lot next to me, parts of it have not been cleared for 25 years, as long as I've been there. Over in Mount Washington, you have the same sort of thing. Bureau of Sanitation, lot cleaning, does clearance sometimes, but not all times. And the Fire Department says there's an unwritten agreement somewhere in the city that says that Mount Washington has special privileges to retain their brush, even though it's a fire hazard. These abatement charges on both the Fire Department and the Public Works Department are not consistent with the law. So I would be very interested in this hearing, having actual verification as to the appropriateness of the lots. Thank you, sir.
That'll close public comment on number 11.
Again, if the gentleman want to step to the ropes, I'll discuss it with him, but I would also suggest—in the past, we used to have a city engineer who knew all of Public Works. I would like to call for one back if I need to put a motion in. We meet three times a week. Someone from the Bureau of Engineer could come and answer these public questions, could help facilitate the communication necessary. A suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labangez. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That's approved. Next item, please.
That brings us to item number 12. Call it special for cards.
Okay. John Walsh on item number 12. After that will be Daniel Garcia. Mr. Walsh passes. Mr. Garcia.
How about the LA Health Department? I want to know where are the houses for people who live here. I want to know where are my homes for people who live here. In all LA, the LA City Health Department has failed to provide a reasonable and accessible housing, not accessible housing that I put in ADA in complying with taxes and so on. I want to know what is the city is not is denying the accessible and affordable home to be more because people will be coming here not just complaining, but also people are seen and be complaining, people who will be better than walls who come with no leg. Are you going to deny them home, accessible home, or them? I hope not, but you do. You bring backlash to the ADA. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. That will close our public comments on item 13. If we can please, sorry, 12, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
That brings us to item 15. Call it special for cards, sir.
Mr. Walsh, item 15.
This is a really—I mean, I want to—this is a totally unimportant item. You are criminalizing the purchase of spray paint cans by 17-year-olds. That's what you're doing. The union president comes up here and says—and you heard what he said. He said, "We're going to get a firefighter killed before this is over." The blood of our firefighters. You do nothing. But when it comes to the really important issues, criminalizing youth who buy—you know, artists use—incidentally, he's using his little handheld BlackBerry, Mr. Garcia said. He's paying absolutely no attention.
I'm listening, so go ahead.
But that's fine. That's fine. Incidentally, if you look at the law, it says, "I get the two minutes." It says that you don't interrupt. Try reading the Brown Act. You're not supposed to heckle or defend yourselves, okay? Those are the rules. And I want to talk about—this is the absolute bottom. You're talking about spray paint cans. We have a city that's out of control. You want the police. You want a whole—and who's behind this? Dennis Zine. Dennis, and I'm going to have to check to find out whether the spray paint can lobby has a lobbyist, because if they don't, I can name Miss Becerra, because I think that way we could get his vote off. Take your extra 23 seconds, HollywoodHighlands.org, to find out what's happening in this city.
Thank you very much. Mr. Walsh, that'll close our comments for public. Mr. Zine is our first speaker. Sorry, Mr. Carras was first.
Thank you.
Well, go ahead. Mr. Zine, you're the maker of the motion. You'll take precedence, and then Mr. Carras.
Thank you. This is a receive-and-file, and what we found is research that there are 27 rules, regulations, laws in the books dealing with spray paint graffiti, and what we want to generate from this hopefully is informing the public that there's a $1,000 reward for anyone who turns in, an individual who is tagging. It's about tagging. It's about tagging our communities throughout the city of Los Angeles. And after the research done by the Police Department, City Attorney's Office, we discovered there are 27 current sections that deal with this particular scourge of the society graffiti tagging, and also that of those individuals arrested, 83% are under the age of 17. So we want to receive and file this particular motion, but at the same time inform the public of the $1,000 reward for anyone turning in, anyone who is tagging our communities. It's all about trying to establish a good quality of life in the city of Los Angeles and to eliminate tagging from the city of Los Angeles. So, Mr. President, the request on this, as stated in the agenda, is to receive and file this matter. So we request that be done, and I thank the Police Department and the City Attorney's Office for their research to discover that we do not need any additional legislation. Again, 27 specific laws dealing with this particular matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carras?
Well, it sounds like my comments are probably now moot. I just—I vaguely recollected something similar to this passing about 25 or 30 years ago, and I was just going to ask if that were the case, and I suspect based on what you said that that is the case, that there are similar items, and we just need to figure out how to publicize them more effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, let's go ahead on the receive-and-file, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That's approved. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk.
All right. Let's run through those.
Councilmember Carras requests to arrive at 11:00 on January 11 due to city business. That meets council policy.
He is excused.
Councilmember Rosendahl requests to be excused on January 18, 21st, 25th, 26th, and 28th due to personal business. That meets council policy.
He is excused.
Councilmember Zine requests to arrive at 11:00 on January 14 due to city business. That meets council policy.
All right. He is excused.
And Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused on January 18, 19, 21, 25, 26, and 28 due to personal business. That meets council policy.
I believe those excuses are no longer needed. That was for potential Navy service, but—so let's hold those on the desk.
Very well. The desk is clear.
Any announcements, colleagues? Announcements? Not if I could ask everybody in council chambers to please rise for our adjourning motions today. If I could ask everybody in chambers to rise, please, for our adjourning motions? Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. My brother's wife's mother and his mother-in-law passed away during the holidays. I got to see her frankly for the last time in November when we finished the RFK dedication complex, and we went over to the Kingsley home where she was, and she literally was not too far away from her end. She was a great lady. Anne was born June 1 in 1922 in New York City. She was the youngest of three daughters. Anne received her BA from the University of Utah, and that's a big deal back in those days for women to get that degree, because her father, Frank Slapinski, was a well-known orthologist. She was inspired to pursue a medical career as a nurse. Over the 30 years of nursing, Anne was well-respected and appreciated, and did even while she had polio. She eventually became head nurse at the Kaiser Sunset Hospital. Anne regularly attended Bethany Presbyterian Church for many years. She was one of the church choirs for many years and taught Sunday School. After Bethany, Anne moved over to Wilshire Presbyterian Church, made many friends, and was also in the choir. Later, Anne moved in with her family in Westchester—that's my brother and his wife Sheila and their two kids—and began attending United Methodist Church in Westchester, where she was a member for five years. In 2005, Anne moved to the Lindsay Manor, where she lived for five and a half years. She got very involved in various activities and politics. She especially loved the Orgami classes, her memoir class, and playing bingo. Anne was known for her friendly, engaging, humble personality and her bright sense of humor. For the last six months of her life, unfortunately, Anne became disabled with congestive heart failure and was bedridden, yet she still enjoyed visits from all of her friends and family. She enjoyed life until December 21, when she passed away. Anne's daughter Sheila was able to be with her most of the time over that last period and just left her a couple of hours before she passed. Anne is survived by her daughter Sheila and Lorena, son-in-law Tom Rosendahl and Tom Zermakovich, and four grandchildren, Robbie Paul, Ricky Luke, Laiana, and Sarana. A public service will be held on Saturday, January 15 at 2:00 p.m. at Kingsley Manor Chapel at 1055 North Kingsley Drive in Los Angeles. May she rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of John Francis Maroney. He died on Friday, December 11, after a four-year illness. He was born to John and Catherine Maroney on January 25, 1946, in St. Louis, Missouri, and was one of the oldest of—one of the oldest of four sons. As a lover of architecture, John went to University of Texas at Austin, where he graduated with an MS in architecture in 1970. In 1974, John moved to Galveston for a project and met and married the love of his life, Tricia Ward, in 1981. John and Tricia split their ties between New York City, where John was involved with several projects, and Galveston, where their only daughter, Leila, was born in 1984. In 1990, he moved to Los Angeles, where they lived and worked till the time of his death. Together, in 1992, they co-founded an artist cooperative that was known as Arts Corla. There, they began development of a one-acre park site that became known as La Tierra de la Culebra in Highland Park. They founded Sparring Orchard Art Park four years later in Temple Bowery and a studio in Chinatown. Colleagues, it's a sad day when we lose someone. As a couple, and Tricia in particular, as a couple, they put together an amazing place in Highland Park at a time when the killings, the shootings were at all-time high in the early 90s. And these are areas in, like in Temple Bowery, but at that time, we had year-round schools. We had 50% dropout rates. We had kids who had nowhere to go, and they invested their time, their talent, in building up with the hard work of Councilman Hernandez, put together block bank funds, we put together leverage funds from the private sector. And today, in 2010, I'm running into young people who are artists, involved in ceramics and organizing, who started in these places back in the early 90s. And it's that kind of impact that they had in our city and our community. In Temple Bowery, we have some very intense gang activity there, and Sparring Orchard is the one place in which kids can actually go and feel safe. A few years back, we had a two-year-old who was shot and killed a house away from that facility, and that's how intense the violence is in these neighborhoods. So in my mind, they save lives, they change lives in ways that—many of us work real hard in our districts, we invest in these projects, and we hope to God that something good will come from them. They are the ones who actually delivered and made these opportunities actually come to fruition. John leaves his wife, Tricia Ward, daughter Leila Ward Maroney, brothers and wives, brother-in-laws, Michael and Scott and Julie Ward, nieces, nephews, and a slew of young people that he mentioned, that he mentored at Arts Corla. Over the last several years, John inspired a design for a multipurpose building at Sparring Orchard that will break ground next spring. In dual flowers, the family quests memorial gifts to the John Maroney Sparring Orchard Pavilion, ACLA PO Box 421133, Los Angeles, California 942, which will bear his name. I'd like for all to join me in this.
Sure.
And we will miss him, and our prayers are with Tricia Ward at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Carras, and then Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the break, Los Angeles lost one of its great eccentric visionary geniuses when Don Van Vliet died at age 69 of complications arising from multiple sclerosis. Van Vliet was better known as Captain Beefheart, and in that guise, he became a hugely influential figure in the world of rock and roll, mixing blues, free jazz, pounding rhythms, punting poetry, a love of animals and nature, and all sorts of other creative impulses into a one-of-a-kind mix of inventive sounds and images. He was born Glendale in 1941 and attended high school in Lancaster, where he met Frank Zappa, who later founded the legendary group, The Mothers of Invention. Zappa and Van Vliet both loved an avant-garde approach to rock music, and so began years of friendship and collaboration. Van Vliet eventually took the name Captain Beefheart, and with a group of musicians he called The Magic Band, became one of the most important and uncompromising musical forces in Los Angeles and the world in the '60s, '70s, and early '80s. He then retired from the world of music to become a successful painter for the rest of his life, which he spent as a recluse in the desert and in Northern California. Captain Beefheart and The Magic Band were an LA act. They played at teen fairs at the Palladium and performed in all the best-known clubs in Los Angeles over the years, and their best-known record, the 1969 double album called Trout Mask Replica, often ranked among the greatest rock and roll albums ever created, was rehearsed and recorded in Los Angeles. He was a one-of-a-kind maverick, proud American, whose music certainly wasn't for everyone, but he cast a giant shadow and had a huge influence on Matt Groening, the creator of The Simpsons. John Lennon and Paul McCartney were big fans of Captain Beefheart. John Lennon and Paul McCartney were, McCartney were big fans of Captain Beefheart. Bob Dylan was an admirer, as were Tom Waits, Johnny Rotten of the Sex Pistols, Joe Strummer of The Clash, and many, many others upon whom he had a great influence. His music wasn't easy for many people to tolerate, much less understand or like, at least at first blush. So one Pulitzer Prize-winning music critic, who was a big fan of his, said that he compared early encounters with Beefheart's music to befriending a porcupine, and wrote that there was no faster way to clear out a party than to put on one of his albums and turn the music up loud. Don Van Vliet, Captain Beefheart, is survived by his wife of more than 40 years, Jan, and he will be greatly missed across the world.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dedicated member of the LAPD, Enrique Rick. Conrado passed away December 28, Detective Two. Conrado born May 13, 1964 in Los Angeles. Appointed Police Department, December 14, 1987. Worked 77th Street, Northeast, Southwest, juvenile detective support, most recently with the Major Crimes Division. Always committed and dedicated professionalism and strong work ethic was always noticed by the Los Angeles Police Department supervisors. January 11, 1991, Officer Conrado was working Northeast Patrol when he and his partner were flagged down by a citizen directed by a man who had experienced a heart attack. Determined that the man did not have a pulse, began administering CPR. Quick action by Officer, Detective Conrado saved the man's life. He was awarded with a commendation. November 2009, he was recognized by the Southern California Drug Task Force for being part of the LAPD major surveillance squad that targeted, identified, and arrested members of the Avenue's gang. Eighty-eight members and associates of the Avenue's were indicted federally, including those responsible for the murder of Los Angeles Deputy Sheriff Juan Escalante. Detective Conrado's hobbies included skiing, mountain biking, and hiking, was a member of the Los Angeles Police Department Ski Team, was the Far West Masters Ski Racing Team, where he won the cup in 2007, 2008, and 2009. Passed away Tuesday, December 28, in Covina, California, surrounded by his family, survived by his wife, Detective Veronica Conrado, Detective Two, robbery homicide division, his father, Ramon, mother Maria, sister Regina, brother Tony, and his two stepchildren, Christopher, 17, and Elizabeth, 12. May he rest in peace, Detective Enrique Rick Conrado.
Thank you. Any other adjourning motions? Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Rosendahl.
That's okay. Mike Harris died a few days ago. He was a good friend of mine. He was the Director of Engineering for Century Cable, which I worked for for 12 years. He married Louise Anlian, who was this real spunky, great lady, and many of you know her from the days in the cable world, and they lived in Connecticut. He got leukemia last May, went through all these chemo regimens, and died two days after Christmas. I was on the phone with Louise last night, consoling her. They have two lovely daughters, and may he rest in peace, Michael Harris.
Thank you. And we want to wish, sure, Mr. Krikorian knows tomorrow is a big celebration. Do you want to wish the community?
Well, thank you for that acknowledgement, Mr. President. I assume you're not talking about my one-year anniversary on the council.
No, well, that is very important to us as well, but it marks a longer occasion.
This is, thank you, Mr. President. Tonight marks Christmas Eve for the Armenian Orthodox Church throughout the world and many other Orthodox branches of Christianity. So on behalf of the entire city of Los Angeles, the city council want to extend best wishes, Shnuravor Nor Dari Yev, Surtsanunt, to the entire Armenian community of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Only in LA does Christmas keep going on for weeks.
Absolutely.
Great tradition. With that, we wish everybody a good rest of the day, and Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. We'll next be in session this Friday.